I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June 6th, 2022. The time is 8:03 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Palin.
Here.
John Cesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzika.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fibbs.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the May 16th, 2022 special meeting and committee of the whole and executive session.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Hey. We call the roll.
John Cesaretti.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzika.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fibbs.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Palin.
Yes.
Motion carries. We will continue with our agenda, starting with facility development. Mr. Panzika.
Thank you. We have a number of items today, and I think all of them, well, Meyer has, so start off with some excitement with it.
All right, so the first item this morning is just an update on our summer construction with school being three and a half days from being over. So Joe, go ahead.
Sure. Good morning. I feel like I was just here. It's only been a few weeks. No, no new news. Lead times still have checked out, so we don't anticipate any major equipment coming late. We did have one revision to the chiller at McKenzie. That new ship dates end of July, but I don't anticipate that being impactful. So from that standpoint, we anticipate a smooth summer. We actually have started some work at Harper. We've been working in the tunnel second shift. So that was just the main focus on mechanical demo, and then we got a jumpstart on some new piping. But Friday is really our day one, so we're looking forward to getting going, and I expect a smooth summer, so no issues. It's just been a lot of just planning, creating our outlooks, figuring out what our goals are, expediting some middles just to make sure that we have all our approvals in place.
Are there any other big items other than the chiller that potentially could be delayed?
Boilers, but everything else is on hand.
Oh, okay.
Really, the chiller and then some DFDs, some variable frequency drives which help operate the equipment. Other than that, most everything's on hand.
Great.
Mm-hmm. So the pre-purchasing really paid off.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Great update.
Yeah, it's great.
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you very much. The next item is long-term capital planning.
All right, so last month, when we talked about the long-term facilities planning, it was more just to like give, share some insight into, you know, kind of the process we went through, all the things that we considered, and kind of where we're looking at now that we're spinning ahead another month. It's time to start getting a little more focused, and we'll start to identify some specific plans and hopefully get some word feedback as we approach the end of it. All right, so District 39 has six buildings, and, you know, one of the considerations as we consider some of these projects is our buildings aren't quite old. Reason I mention that is as we try to do anything along the lines of renovations, it can make things a little trickier or a little more expensive. All right, school-based capital projects. So last time we talked about, you know, kind of what's involved in there, and so is more recently, we've had an annual budget for this line item of about $600,000. And when we look forward, one of the recommendations that I have is that the board consider increasing that annual amount to $900,000. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is that we're going to continue to see a need to do these types of projects. But the way I've been looking at it is if we were to increase it to $900,000 and then put that within kind of our five-year forecasting, we've built that into our modeling, and it allows us to handle more projects of this size in a particular summer. You know, it kind of gives us some budgetary room to handle things that come up that, you know, might not be in the $1 million or $2 or $3 million range, but could be in that, you know, $100,000 or $200,000 range that are still important and that we still need to address. So it's more of a planning. I guess the way I would think of it is, you know, the idea would be we would increase to potentially $900,000 a year, provided that we feel like there's opportunity to do that, to do that level of work. So if we came across a year where we were doing a lot of summer projects of a large scale, and we realized like, hey, we're just not going to be able to do that level of work on these smaller projects, then we would pull it back for that particular year. But I think from a planning tool standpoint is something that I think would serve us well.
Corey, on that one, just real quick, I think also the $600,000 number we had for that date, I mean, probably farther back than you looked, but as long as I can remember.
Okay.
It's also a time to adjust it from that standpoint, too. Thank you.
All right, so then when we look back at, as we, you know, the idea of this presentation is looking ahead for the next five years, and kind of mapping out a plan, you know, one thing to look back at is, you know, what has the district done over the last decade? And then sometimes when school districts do this, they haven't done a lot, and in some cases, they've done a lot. So when I, when I look at District 39, there has been a lot accomplished over the last decade. We've had, you know, some major updates to the learning commons in every building. We've added space and done renovations to support the Keep 39 program, which this is the first school year that that's been at all four elementarys. Added several large space air conditioning. Ramona in the mid-2010 saw the addition of the Ramona of the EC wing. And then High Crest had several renovations over a three-year period that added space and renovated several spaces throughout the building. So then we start to think about, okay, well, what's next is from an initiative standpoint, I think for us, something that immediately pops to the front of our brains is air conditioning. So I wanted to kind of summarize our large space situation as far as air conditioning across all six buildings. Pretty much, you know, from a large space standpoint, every building is pretty equal. There's a couple of buildings that might have just one more large space than others, but that's just a good summary of where we're at. So then the next thing to think about is, what does it look like on the classroom level? So the, on this particular slide, on the left-hand side, what we see is where we're at right now, percentage-wise, what number of classrooms in every building are air-conditioned? And one thing I want to point out is before we did the second-floor AC project at the junior high last summer, that total, the total percentage across the district was at just 45%. So adding an additional 20 classrooms with air conditioning last summer bumped us up to just over 54%. So then you look over to the middle of the slide and in the right-hand side. So what I've done is put the percentages after the end of this summer, which will change because of the McKenzie project, will be our first building that hits 100%. The third column is then at the end of either '23, the summer of '23 or '24, and looking at the possibility that an additional four buildings would reach that, that 100% threshold. And then, last but not least, the junior high has about a dozen classrooms that would have to wait until summer of '25 or '26 to receive that. Ultimately, kind of getting us to the point where every classroom in D39 is air-conditioned. So the next thing I want to look at is, as we think about our five-year capital plan, what, you know, last month I talked about casting a wide net, considering a lot of projects. Now we need to start, you know, being a little more focused. So these next two slides have a list of projects that are proposed in the five-year capital plan. So we have Central and Ramona at about $3.5 million, adding air conditioning. And the same thing with Harper, so the remaining classrooms. The one thing that separates Harper versus Ramona and Central is that Harper, we're doing a good bit of work this summer with, in part, as part of the boiler project. That would be one of the reasons that that amount is lower than the other two schools. And then you have the junior high at about $2.93 million to add the last dozen classrooms on the first floor. Then we have at High Crest to add the air conditioning to the last remaining classrooms. Plus, that would include a bunch of UNIVET work. They're replacing UNIVETS, which they are due for replacement, and then some building automation system work, where High Crest currently operates on three different building automation systems. Plus, there are over 20 classrooms that are controlled individually. So from, you know, a management perspective of being able to control the building is quite challenging for our stationary engineer. Then the other two projects that are in this proposed five-year plan, we have the partial roof replacement at the junior high, and then we have a window replacement at the junior high as well. We do believe that the windows at the junior high go back are original to the building. So what I've laid out this morning is a few scenarios for the board to consider, and then a, then a shot of like, what does our fund balance percentage look like with each of those scenarios going out five years? So the first scenario includes the four buildings that, that need, that we were looking to get air conditioning. We would do two in the, two of those buildings in the summer of '23, two of them in the summer of '24. And then in this, and then the MECC here, we would address the water, replacing the water piping, and then a couple bathroom renovation. Then at the last half of the five-year window, we would look at doing either the partial roof replacement or adding air conditioning to the junior high's first floor. That would be done, that's kind of the decision point there as we got to that step in the five-year plan, would be whether the roof was ready to be replaced, or could it hold off for another year and allow us to do another air conditioning project? And then the last project on the list would be replacing the windows at the junior high. So that's scenario one. This shows the fund balance percentage going out five years. Every year, including the current one, stays above 40%, which is our target for operating funds. Scenario two, similar composition of projects. The main difference between scenario one and scenario two said instead of doing three, two projects, two air conditioning projects, next summer, we would do three. And then in the summer of '24, we would have one project. The remainder of the schedule would stay the same. Similar graphic, all five years, fund balance percentage stays above 40%. Brings us to scenario three. Scenario three is a little more aggressive, and it keeps, keeps in mind what we're facing with inflation. And, you know, it's the idea is that if the plan is to do these, when we know inflation is big and there's other, there's a lot of other work in the industry, we should try and set ourselves up to, you know, get the best pricing possible, and we've started to formulate a plan of how we might go about that. So this scenario would be to add air conditioning to four buildings in the summer of '23, plus the MECC. Then we would take a break from projects that we started scheduled in the summer of '24, and then we would finish out the last three years. The one difference in this scenario is we look at the fund balance, because we are accelerating the expenditures, and we're moving some of these potential expenditures from fiscal year '25 into fiscal year '24, as currently constructed, the fund balance drops down to just over 38% fiscal year '24. Then with no projects in the summer of '24, it would pop back up over 40 through the duration of these years out to 2027. I think one of the things to consider as we think about this plan is that this is really a snapshot of where we're at right now. There are many things that could change, like the point where we would be asking the board to kind of lock themselves into a path of what projects to do really wouldn't occur until December, when you seek approval for the, for the actual bids. And the nice thing about that timeline is, A, it gives us another six months to see what has occurred between now and then. We would have the end of a fiscal year, we would be getting into a new fiscal year, potentially, you know, ideally the settlement of one of our marketing contracts. We would have actual numbers from the bids, hoping that our plan was successful and that we were able to achieve some savings by going out to bid in November and producing those competitive bids. So just because you see a number now, we would certainly, as we look ahead to December, that's normally when we do our, our updated annual five-year forecast, that includes the end of the prior fiscal year. The nice thing about that timeline is we would have a lot of new information to incorporate that. The board would be making decisions based upon very new information. So the next, the next thing on my mind is like, okay, we have all these ideas of projects that we want to do over the next five years. How are we going to fund, fund these projects? So when I look at it, there's really three different areas that are kind of funding, funding these projects. The first and primary, the item, would be the issuance of bonds during the 2023 calendar year. As Liz shared last month, the scenario that would generate about $11.3 million in proceeds would get paid off over, over a 13-year period. In talking with Liz, I think it was maybe a couple months now, trying to get her feel for, you know, what's the appropriate thing when we go to issue in '23? Do we issue all at once? Do we do a split issuance between '23 and '24, you know, which would depend on the composition of projects that we do? What time of the year do we go out to issue? And, you know, her answer was, you know, this one, I think, was in April. It's just too early to give any specific recommendations. Things can change so much in a six-month period. And so I guess where I'm at is, we are going to be doing the debt certificate refunding this fall, and we had talked about this past winter. So, you know, Liz will be at our meetings at least one or two times. I'm thinking as we get into the fall and we get closer to this decision point, Liz could update us and say, okay, this is what we're seeing, you know, as we get into late fall, of when it might be advantageous during 2023 to issue bonds. Does she think, you know, trying to get in in the winter is the best play, or we wait till the spring or potentially the summer? So though, from a timing perspective, I would look for her guidance as we get into the fall, and they're able to kind of assess things heading into the calendar year '23. Another source that would help pay for these projects is using our existing fund balance. And then the, and then a last part is just kind of supplementing the overall funding structure with some Senate Bill 508 refund recapture amounts. The fiscal year '23 budget has about $500,000, just over $500,000 incorporated into that, that, right as we all remember, the amount changes from year to year, and the board has, does, does have discretion, at least per Cook County, to capture all of what they say is our allocation, or part, or none. And so I guess where I'm looking at is, we know we have it in the, in the budget for fiscal year '23, and as we look ahead to potentially future fiscal years, I think it would certainly be a consideration, something that we would need to reevaluate as we work forward and see what the actual pricing is of some of these projects. And potentially looking at, you know, use, taking advantage of these dollars either for a couple of years beyond '23, or possibly, possibly all five years, just depending upon where things come in. So that said, we did want to look at one scenario. So when we're issuing the bonds, I mentioned a 13-year payback. We also were, wanted to take a quick look and see, well, what happens if we shrink that payback period to 10 years? So at 13 years, we're looking at generating right now about $11.3 million. At 10 years, we would be generating about $8.5. So you're looking at a difference of roughly $2.8 million. So from my perspective, what would happen if we, when we ultimately may get to that decision point of like, how long do we want to pay off? How long do we want the payback period for these bonds to be? If we elect for the shorter period, from what we're seeing with market conditions, the first kind of thing that would have to go from our five-year plan would be to make the finances work and stay above 40%. We would have to remove adding air conditioning to the first four classrooms at the junior high from this five-year plan. The second change that we would need to make is that instead of trying to tackle the High Crest UNIVET project in '23, I would then recommend that we would slide that back to '24. But then any air conditioning that goes along with High Crest would get split away from the UNIVET and automation system work, would probably get delayed until the summer of '26, or possibly summer of '25. The three projects that we would probably be, we would be committing to under that scenario is that we would be the three elementary project, three elementary schools that don't have air conditioning or, likely path would be to do two in the summer of '23 and then one in the summer of '24. So I wanted to identify a potential timeline for, for, for the first year of this plan, just because it's, when you look at the potential scenarios that we're talking about, it seems like that probably has the one that has the most activity. So, but potential timeline might look like this month, the board authorizes the district to start incurring design cost. Then from August to October, the board receives budgetary updates from Nicholson Associates as they become available. That follows our standard practice as we go through the design process. Then we hit November, where we would target getting those bids out to the street in early November, the goal being open to everything by Thanksgiving. We would, as Joe mentioned last month, the idea being we can be in that first group of districts out to bid, gives us, sets us up for that best opportunity to really receive competitive pricing and to engage a lot of different contractors in each trade area. And then for December of '22, we would then be bringing actual bids for the board to review and approve. Nice thing with this timeline is that if we're opening the bids, it gives us the chance to bring actual bids to like the December Facilities Committee and finance and talk about it there, have a nice discussion about it, and then come back a week later and potentially have approval. Then to kind of piggyback on that, around that same time is when I would expect that Liz could provide us more specific information regarding the timing of bond issuance heading into 2023. On the flip side to that is, at least three of these projects, we're expecting to require a good bit of asbestos abatement work. Embedded in these projects is removing old piping, putting in new piping. The piping is typically, has asbestos in the insulation that's wrapped around it. And so, similar to the construction projects, we would want our environmental services consultant to get the projects going as quickly as possible. And so we would look to do that as we get into 2023. And then at some point in '23, we would issue bonds related to the projects. And then next summer, we would complete whatever projects have been approved by the board. So as we consider this, we threw out some scenarios that are mere, similar to what we've done in the past, some that are a little more aggressive. Obviously, the focus of this is the air conditioning. We think that this could really represent a pretty significant change to the environmental situation in each classroom, particularly in the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year. It's a big commitment, but we feel, one that we think could certainly be worthwhile. So really, what are the next steps, or what are we looking for from the board this morning? I've kind of narrowed it down to a few things beyond whatever the, however the board wants to go about discussing it is. Receiving some direction on whether to increase that annual amount from $600,000 to $900,000, where, where we feel like we can handle and we can do the projects. I think the next thing would then be receiving some board direction on the composition and the overall long-term plan for these summer construction projects over the next five years. And then the last thing would be just getting that board authorization to begin incurring design cost for the summer 2023 projects. I feel like that's a really important step. I mean, as I said, like the dollar amounts that are involved, these, these are not small dollar amounts, and we take that very seriously. We want to set the district up as best as we can to receive those competitive, competitive bids. And in talking with our construction team, the best way to do that is whatever projects or path you think we want to go down, getting some authorization today would be very helpful in getting that process going. So with that, be happy to answer any questions or allow the board some discussion.
I have a number, but should I start or does somebody else want to?
I could start.
Okay.
I get to ask the obnoxious one. Thank you. It's a lot of work, and it's good to see it all in one place. It'll get me blood, although it's a shocking amount of money. So I tell myself, and constituents, that it costs about $1 million per new classroom when we build a classroom. That's kind of how I think of it. Is that how you guys think of it?
Wow.
It's been what it is. It's been our historic. Yeah.
That's what I, yes.
Yeah, so I always think the obvious question, what's it cost to tear them down and, you know, start over? And I, maybe it'd be cheaper, but then I understand if it's a million dollars classroom, it would not, it would be a fortune. And tend to have the, there's a question. Tend to have the conversation with constituents about the new school in Northfield, which is relative to new one, that costs 30 million or something. It's gorgeous. And, you know, we have schools that are very well-maintained, that we really enjoy and use, and we have no intention of tearing them down, and we're going to fix them. At about, I have 210,000 a classroom on average, so that are pushing. I would be, I think, remiss if I didn't ask, you know, is there a way to make it last? Or is this, is this something that we are stuck with as far as building codes and things like that? Why does it cost so much?
I'll answer the first part, and then I'll let either Joe or Colby or Sandra, whoever puts the pick, answer the next part. So in each of these scenarios where we're adding, so like this summer, like we did last summer at junior high, this summer at McKenzie, we are adding a chiller up on the roof. And then that's, and then the, you know, the chiller would funnel, would provide the air conditioning to the UNIVETS in the classrooms. So that's kind of the structure that, there are certainly things that make that expensive, you know, going into every classroom and pulling out the, in the cases of, in our cases, pulling out the UNIVETS, putting in new ones. You're just touching a lot of different places. So I, from my perspective, I can certainly see how the projects are expensive. Now, the question of, like, are there alternatives to that? I'll let Joe or Colby or...
I can let Colby speak to the alternatives. I mean, neither one of us are engineers, but we're very familiar with this. Just to further what Corey was saying, yes, there's various scopes of work involved with these. There's protection of existing, there's miscellaneous demolitions, ceiling work, finish work, equipment, lots of labor. We oftentimes run into screening work up on the roof. It's not just a matter of setting a piece of equipment. We get into structural steel modifications, aluminum screening, temperature control work. You add it all together, you have substantial projects, and that, and that's really it. When it comes to alternative designs, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, it's pretty straightforward with what's been designed to date and where we're at. I don't anticipate other types of systems that could drastically reduce cost. I don't know if that was the answer you're looking for, but it's, it's extensive. And then electrical support for all the mechanically, all the mechanical work that we do, it's just, it's multiple trades to get these things done.
I think it's important to lay out, yeah, for people who are interested, why it costs so much.
You have abatement. Yep. It's a little bit of everything.
Hey, John, I sit at home, I have trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry, Lisa. I had some questions then. So a couple of high-level... So, uh, a couple of high level ones first. On the, on the timeline, the bond, going for a bond and committing to projects. One of the things that's unique in this, and I'll get to that a little bit later, is that we're actually borrowing money for capital projects, specifically for capital projects. So it wasn't clear here, the commitment time for lining up the construction and when we go for the bond, what's the order of that? It seemed to me that we'd want the bond before we make the commitment. And then we almost have to.
So at least as construction, constructed right now, the plan would be to identify what projects we would like to pursue, get bids and then, potentially for summer 23. Then, as we're opening the bids, around the same time Liz could advise us, at what point do we want to, um, in 2023, issue the bonds? I think the nice thing from my perspective is if we're going to design and bid three or four projects, we would have that actual pricing available to us. That's potentially half of the projects that are incorporated in this five-year plan. It gives us a much better sense of where, where the, the bond issuance would need to be going into 2023. So, um, you know, the reason for 2023 or, you know, somewhere in the middle of 2023 when Liz and I had talked, was that if, if we didn't have existing funds on hand to pay the interest cost on the, on these bonds for a couple of years, the next opportunity to, to kind of capture money to repay principal and interest wouldn't occur until 2025. So, um, when I look at it, we're probably looking at something in 2023. Could be spring, summer, like I said, possibly even winter. That would be the, the point with which the funds on hand can, can cover our interest cost until our, until a room becomes available in our debt service extension base to repay the principal and interest on these bonds. That was kind of the decision point as I talked with Liz. So, yeah, in, in some case, we would be asking the board to approve some projects in December before we actually have the bonds. But from what I've seen in my career, that, that happens sometimes. Like you, as long as you have a plan that's viable for issuing the bonds shortly thereafter, I'm okay with, I'm okay with taking that approach.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that's a risk that we have to keep in mind though. I mean, with interest rates over the last, you know, decade being almost zero and, and projected to stay around that, you know, moving a, a bond issue out by a year might move the interest rate by, you know, a gap point or something. In a, in an era where interest rates are unpredictable, but unpredictable mostly in the upward direction, committing to spending the money before we know the interest rate might be a point higher than we expected adds risk. So that, that's why I was asking the question. And I think it's something when we discuss the finances, we have to, to think about and make sure we understand. The, the other, another question I have is there are desirable projects and there are, and there's necessary projects. And it looks like in all of these plans, I'll call it fixes to WJHS got moved to the end. And again, from a risk standpoint, if we get somewhere in the middle and we decide that, you know, we, we did the, we got the money, we did the projects, but incomes exceeding isn't coming in where we expected or expenses are higher than we expected, the flexibility in the out years is to do lots of capital projects because we'll have committed until 2036, I think, before we can easily get another bond. What's the risk that those maintenance projects, if they got delayed by multiple years, if that would be a problem?
So one of the, so one of the reasons that we placed the, the projects that I would view as things that we need to address over the next five years in the summers that we did is when we sat down with our, our construction team, looking at the existing condition of them, what was giving, what is giving us problems? What's the current state, particularly the junior high roof? While it is old, we're not seeing, we're not seeing issues with it. And so when we look, when we look at it, that was one decision point that, or one point of information that helped us feel comfortable in pushing that back a couple more years. The other component is that while the overall project cost for that is about two and a half million dollars, when you look at the setup of our roofing systems, there are many distinct sections. So I think at the junior high, there's potentially up to 15 or more individual sections. And so when we look at it from that perspective, if something were to happen, usually what we've seen in roofing is one section generally doesn't impact another. So if something were to happen and we were to come back and say, oh, let's tackle this area over the learning commons or let's tackle this area over one portion of, of the second floor or something on the first floor, we have that option to, to tackle a little bit. And so instead of being hit with, being forced to do all of it at one time, we could tackle a part of it at a time and achieve what we need, which would be fixing the roof. So that's one of it. The other, another one of the projects included in the five-year plan was getting, getting the Univents replaced at Highcrest. That is why Highcrest is in combination with the desire to add classroom air conditioning. That's why that project is, is near the front of the list and trying to accomplish that. And ideally 23 or 24. We feel that, you know, without consideration for air conditioning, we would be wanting to tackle, tackle those Univents. And then the lot, the other one is the window project at the junior high. And while we certainly could do that project as early, you know, next summer, one of the reasons when we sat down and tried to map out what, what, what can we do and what will be impactful? And what do we think will have the, the best impact on the district? You know, we looked at it and said, if the choice is delaying windows, which we're able to replace if broken or we're still able to fix them, if the choice is delaying some old windows for a few more years versus being able to add some classroom air conditioning a few years earlier, we decided, we sided with the decision to, to do classroom air conditioning. So that was kind of the rationale or the thought process behind three projects that I consider needing to be done in this five-year period. And I guess the one that is kind of a flip of the coin on whether it needs to be done is really the window project. As long as we're able to have our window repair company, you know, come in and fix those, like other than being really old, like they can continue to, you know, be in place if, if we had other projects that, that needed to happen first. So that was kind of the background on where we drafted the plan. Really, at the end of the day, it came down to trying to air condition those classrooms and have the biggest impact possible in the quickest timeframe.
And, and I'll just add to that. I do think that there is a significant impact to adding air conditioning to the classroom. We've talked about this at previous meetings as well, and I know that's a goal in part of the board. And certainly we've heard from families and staff that that would make a significant difference as well. I'll point out that I think Corey has conservatively estimated for the budget and the projections looking forward. We also have some flexibility if in fact we're going to increase the, the building capital improvement project budget. As he pointed out, in years where we need a little more flexibility, we can make some adjustments there as well. I think the best step forward is to initiate the design work and we can continue to evaluate the costs as the bids come in and as we monitor the interest rates for the bonds. I mean, I think we'll, we've done very well with that in, in recent years. And I think we can continue to expect that we'll, we'll do well with that. And with actuals coming in just a little below budget, which often happens for us as well. So I think the options presented today give us the opportunity to reach for those goals while also giving us some flexibility to adjust as we monitor costs and budget and interest rates as well. So I think those are all really good points that you've made, Frank.
I, I think last time, and, and it certainly makes sense, we, we talked about, it makes sense to get the initial design work for the air conditioning because in almost any scenario we can think of, we're going to eventually air condition everything.
Right.
And it doesn't age that much. So there isn't, we're spending some money upfront, but it's not wasted money or, or inappropriate money or anything. So that's, that makes sense. How much, how much borrowing we do, what rates we are, what that means in terms of, of flexibility and risks, we need to, to keep talking about. It's not a, I, I don't think we've had, you know, enough information to make a final decision on that. So for this budget, if, let's go to an extreme, if we decided not to borrow any money, is it still appropriate to, to sign off on this budget? Or does that make the budget so far off from what it could be that, that we need to have the discussion on, on borrowing before we sign off on the budget?
I'll let Corey address that. But I do think that if the board were to choose not to issue any bonds at all, then we are at a, a different place in our long-term capital planning altogether. Then much of this work is tabled.
Can I just jump in for a sec? I've been trying. Corey, can you go ahead and put on the, the slide again that asks what you're asking for today? So we can just look at that again. And then the other thing I wanted to recommend to folks is, you know, we had asked, I think it was last meeting, thank you Corey, kind of what would be the most impactful to teaching and learning? And Dr. Krimis Solly said it was air conditioning and then that was seconded by Aaron, who works in schools and can really attest firsthand the impact. And so I just want us to remember what we're signing off on. And so Corey's saying six to nine, um, you know, can we get going on design cost? And then Corey, on the second bullet, what exactly does that mean? What are you asking?
Well, I think by, I mean, on some level, by, by providing authorization to bolt point three, you're, you're also saying you support on, at least on some level, at least the composition of the, of the projects that are included in the five-year plan. Maybe not exactly as, as listed, but if we were to start designing, say, the four air conditioning projects or if the board were to give us that authority this morning to do Central Ramona Harper and Highcrest, you know, on some level, that is kind of the, what I'm looking for in conjunction with number two. Um, I think the thing is, is as we think about a five-year plan, I presented some scenarios that are very specific. The reality is I, I tend to think of the five-year plan as these are the projects that we really would like to accomplish over the next five years. You know, I think obviously we, the desire is to do air conditioning first, but like the, the specific order is less important to me. Like all the way through, like trying to figure that out, I'm not as concerned about that. Because for me, that'll, as we hit major milestones where we finish a fiscal year, we create a new budget, we get bids back, we settle contracts, we, all these major things that helps inform like the next step in the process. So I think for us, the main thing is probably direction on the 600 to 900,000. And then what level of authorization to begin incurring design cost? I think the rest of it, particularly bolt point two, just kind of comes along for the ride with that.
That's really helpful. And I just want to say, from my point of view, if people want to start expressing where they are, like I'm in favor of the 900 and the design on all four. I feel like the financing and the what gets done is what year? We will, as Frank said, figure that out down the line, but I think we should proceed with design.
And I, and I think that's was the point of, of the question. So Lisa, you restated it nicely. From a priority standpoint, the 900,000 and the design authorization, I think are relatively not controversial and, and appropriate if we agree today to, to make that known so that we can move forward.
I think to Lisa's point, people should, because I, I don't want to assume that. I think people should weigh in and I, I would agree. I think we should move forward with those. When we get to the point of discussing the composition, I just continue to wonder about our function in the summer. I love the idea of being ambitious and get more done earlier to impact more kids. That would be incredible. Don't know how it works financially, but also just functionally in terms of summer programming. But that's, you know, for now, that doesn't need to be decided. I'm in support of what you're asking.
Aaron, on those two topics in particular.
Yeah, I'm also in support.
I'm also in support.
Me too.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I'm in support of the 900. I'm for the 900.
And John?
Yeah, me as well.
Then while we're on this, so I do have some more questions about the rest of it. So that, that part, I think, well, we just said, we all kind of agree. And I think those were the most important, the most timely items that we needed for today. So Corey, is that, is that true? Those are the two things you really needed today?
Yes, it is. Yeah. Because it would impact, getting, getting going on the design thing is obviously critical to really try and drive those competitive bids. And then just having that direction helps me with budgeting for next year. I think just to answer some of the questions, you know, the nice thing that I think about the plan or at least what you guys have just supported is that over the next basically six months between now and December, we've, we've set ourselves up to have a lot of flexibility. And obviously there's a lot of things we'll bring back to the board. And certainly to Amy's point about, you know, doing four projects in a summer, that's really, I think, up to, to our administrative team to kind of work through between now and then. And as I thought about like today's presentation, like leading into maybe a month before, like coming back as we really start to identify what, what are, what is possible, what do we have to do to make it work? And then sharing all that with the board so the board can feel comfortable, you know, maybe a month ahead of time. Like, okay, if we really do end up with four really competitive bids and we want to do this, this is what it would take. And then kind of look at it from all angles. So that's kind of the thought process that I've had, you know, leading it, what, what might occur over the next six months?
So I had a couple more. On the, the different scenarios here, and, but I think last time, the potential interest rate was in the fours.
Yep.
So for the 13 million dollar loan, that works out to a little north of $4 million in, in interest cost? Right around that range, I think.
I've only seen the, have a look at the, see if I can find what the estimate was from Liz's scenarios. Go ahead. I'll, I'll try and look.
So, you know, clearly we're, we're talking about the, the next and the important facilities step is to do air conditioning. And I think what we're, what we have to talk about is timing and financing, you know, fiscal responsibility. And, you know, what that does to the timing. And I don't, I don't think, it sounds like everybody agrees that the next most important non-maintenance projects that we need to do are air conditioning. So I, I think. So I, I think, you know, when we add up the air conditioning, it's about $18 million of money, um, and potentially ballpark of $4 million. So that's about $22 million that we're committing to that capital project. And again, we need to and, and want to do that. It's just a question of how quickly and how we fund it. And that $4 million is potentially a number that could be reduced in different scenarios. So I think when we think about this and we talk about this, what we have to remember is, from a financial standpoint, when was the last time we used a specific bond in order to do capital improvements? I mean, literally, I can't remember. So 10, 15 years plus? That, your understanding also, Cory?
I mean, yes and no. I mean, I think on some level, I would, I would think that the debt certificates that we did, um, were construction-related. They may not be like labeled that, um, but like that, I mean, that was the, the driving force for those.
Yeah, the intent, for sure, of issuing those bonds.
But that, that's a, I just barely understand it, but there's several different bond categories. Now is in a different bond category, and we've been consistently, you know, keeping that funding level maximized. This is, this is a slightly different type of bond than we've talked about over the last four, five, 10 years. I think, Nad, is that?
We can do some research and bring that back to you. That, is, is that your concern or your issues? You want to know the name under which each of the bonds have been?
There's a, there's a number of things here that are, they may be appropriate, but they're different than we've done for the last 10-plus years in the district. Certainly since the referendum, but, but as years I can tell, several years before the referendum. And, and one of those is, is borrowing specifically for capital projects. I mean, we've done, we've have the bond, um, authorization that we optimize so that we, we use our, our tax revenues correctly. And we do that on a continuing basis, and that ends up being used for capital projects. This is a, this is on, this is a different category bond, as I understand it. So I'd like to understand that. The other one, for at least 15 years, and noticeably before the referendum, is we, we always said 10 years is as far as, you know, a board should commit out, that it leaves some flexibility for the future. Um, and having, having it go beyond that says, you know, if something goes wrong, you know, if we, we had a fire or, or, the scenario, you know, I'm not saying that specific, but if something, or, you know, the economy really collapses, or we find that Illinois goes bankrupt and decides not to give us as much money, I mean, whatever, that 13, you know, 10 years was necessary to do long-term planning, but, you know, we shouldn't extend it too far. And we haven't extended it beyond 10 years in at least the last 15 years.
Right. And so I think you asked at the last meeting for Cory to come back and describe to you what the difference would be if we chose to maintain that 10-year somewhat arbitrary mark, or move forward with the 13-year, um, and, and how much flexibility there is? Because I think it would be, um, not accurate to represent the 13-year borrowing cycle to mean that we don't have any flexibility to deal with the unanticipated emergencies that may arise. I think that, as Cory has described, even with the 13-year plan, we still have quite a bit of flexibility and the opportunity to borrow some additional money coming up. I think it, you are right that it is a little bit different than the last bonding cycle, but I, I do think it's, it at least needs to be acknowledged that 10 years and 13 years, the 10-year mark was a somewhat arbitrary mark. I think the intention of the board then and now is to ensure that we have flexibility to address emergencies as they come up. And I think that Cory has laid out for the board the flexibility that would be available even with a 13-year cycle on this next bond issuance. And I think he's also identified what the impact would be if we only go with 10 years. For sure, WJHS is getting pushed out. I mean, there isn't a way really to, um, to expect that we would be able to accomplish that. And so that really becomes the board's, um, debate among yourselves. How important is it for us to get that done in the next five years within this strategic plan cycle? Or is, do we feel more comfortable? Do you feel more comfortable acknowledging WJHS is going to be kind of on hold until the next cycle? That, it's okay to do, but that's really the trade-off that you're making if, if you decide to, to do that.
And just to clarify, that's not the decision point from us today.
It is not the decision point right now.
So I'm just being cognizant of our time and.
Yeah. I want to acknowledge that the, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
The, the questions that were brought up, I think Cory has done a really nice job of attempting to answer and address for the board.
I agree.
And it, it really will come down to the board deciding, is maintaining that 10-year mark the most important thing for you to do? Is trying to accomplish these projects within this five-year plan something that you want to try to accomplish? And ultimately, what does the financing look like at the time of issuance? All of that comes into play, and you're right, you don't need to make that decision today.
Yeah, and, and I just jump in again. You know, I, I do want to thank Cory and team, right? Because we have said air conditioning is important. We've been talking about this for years. And he's given us some options, which we're not going to have all the answers for today. But I personally, I kind of feel the same way when I felt about, um, when the board figured out a solution for, um, the 10-year path to all-day kindergarten, right? That was a complicated problem, where we didn't have a real perfect funding solution, but we came up with something. And this too feels like there's been a drumbeat of, we need air conditioning, and now we have a real path. So I just want to thank you, Cory, um, for kind of charting out multiple paths for us to consider.
I, I agree. I mean, all the work we're doing here is, is good, and the scenarios are great, and the philosophy of, of getting air conditioning into our buildings as soon as it's financially responsibly can be done, I think is a, is a clearer axiom of where we are. The, I, I just wanted to bring up some of these topics now because we, there aren't a lot of more meetings before we're getting closer and closer to de facto having locked these things in. And we want to make sure that everyone is.
But just to clarify, we're not locking anything in until December, right? Like, we're.
Well, but I.
And it's not de facto. We're having discussions.
Yes. I, 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 but that was the point of asking, from a budget standpoint, if we put together a budget and finalize it in August, and then we, and I, I use for exaggeration purposes, you know, dramatically did something different, what are the implications of that? And it sounds like it's more messy than not allowed, so that, that gives us some flexibility from that standpoint. But these, without the meeting next in July, you know, these things start coming up on us quick, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll end there, but, but, you know, we're, we're making some decisions that are different than the last 10-plus years of board decisions, and, and I think that needs to be seriously discussed, not like it, it would be, okay, so let's do it. I mean, I know we're not going to do anything flippantly, but, but it's important to keep that history in mind, and, and it's important to, um.
I think we're all thinking about those things, and very well aware of.
Nobody, nobody's flipping about any of them. No, no, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply, I didn't say. Yeah, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, we're, we're all following it very closely.
Um, all right, so on the, um, finance thing, I think there's one more item, Cory? Oh, I'm late, I'm sorry. Any more discussion on that one?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, one, one other real quick item. So the, um, Central PTA has been raising money. And as I understand it, if COVID hadn't happened, this playground replacement probably would have already occurred. However, they have met their milestone, um, to, to fu- to fully fund it by the PTA alone. And so, which is great. And so where we're at now is that initially, we had thought that they might not, that the plan would be that they would replace it in the summer of '23. However, they are thinking much along the way we are, that inflation is very costly. And so right now, we are currently trying to work through some scenarios where, um, we can maybe get the playground done next year in the fall. So they can avoid some inflation, but, um, and which is nice because the PTA is covering the, the cost of the, of the new playground. Uh, but then, you know, there are some considerations on our side. So we're working through that. And one of the things that would rise to the board level is, I think in the past, when we've done these, I know we did for Ramona, and I had heard that we did it for the, um, for the, like, the kindergarten playground that's over at Central, we do a donation agreement. So we will probably have that as we come back after summer break and, uh, at some point, and have, have that agreement. So just wanted to make the board aware that some good things are happening over at Central, and because of inflation, everybody's trying to move as quickly as possible.
And, and they don't need anything for us before August?
No, no, that's the timeline that we've talked about is well into the fall before they would get going, so.
Philosophically, that if they ask us, do anybody in the board have any problems with the concept at least? Okay. So at least philosophically, without details, but philosophically, it's hard to imagine. You'd say no, so we can pass that on.
Okay.
And anything else on facilities from your standpoint?
That wraps it up for today.
Any other questions from anybody else? So okay, then I'll hand it back to President Salem.
Thank you. Great. And I will turn it over to Mr. Caesaretti for finance.
Your present failing. So we have three things, um, the.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much for being here and for all your work.
Have a great summer and a productive summer.
Yes, please.
We will try, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have three things in the financial, the finance committee to talk about. So we have the WMA Community Special Education Agreements, tentative budget, and then the District 39 tentative budget, and then, um, I think some kind of pro forma resolutions and renewals. We'll turn it over to you, Cory.
Thank you. Find the page real quick that I want to share. So this, for, for Wixie, um, this is our agreement that, that the District 39 has with, with Avoca. Um, so Wixie has its own separate financial statements, meaning it has its own separate budget. So we wanted to share the tentative budget with, uh, with the board as we will approve the tentative budget next week. So just real quick, um, the way Wixie structured is that the total revenues each year match the total expenditures. Um, so there's no fund balance, there's really not much activity going through. Um, we still, you know, partner with them, but because they've always had their own financials, we continue to have it, we create this budget. So you see $206,060 of revenue in 206060 on the expenditure side. Um, there's really, from, if you were to consider how this looked to the prior year, it gets a couple thousand dollars bigger than the amounts from last year, but the same process function is going to remain the same as it was during current school year and it will remain for next year. Be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, it's, at this point in time, it's a pretty simple, um, pretty simple budget.
I see no questions. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to D39 tentative budget.
So as we, one of the steps we take every year is to have the tentative budget. So the, the, we have a timeline for, for our budget process. So last month, we shared a view of the, review of the draft budget. This month, um, we review the tentative budget, which is really the version of the budget that the board approves and then puts on public display for at least 30 days. So today, we'll just review it real quickly. Um, and then next Monday, we would ask the board to approve the tentative budget, then they would set the, uh, public budget hearing to be held on August 22nd. And then in between next, next Monday and that August 22nd date, our tentative budget would be on display to the public to view. Um, I think the old requirement or school code had it, someone could actually stop by and look at it. We take the step to make it easy and then put it on our website. Um, then in, then in August, we'll review, at the, at the Finance Committee in August, we would review any changes, and as always, we usually have a, a good number of changes. To make it easy on the board, we would detail out what those changes were from the beginning of our budget process to what the final version will be, so everybody can see what those, uh, what those changes are. And then at the August 22nd, we'll hold that hearing, we'll hold that public hearing, and then we'll ask the board to approve it. Later that month, we, as we get into September, we would file our board-approved budget with all state agencies and any other agencies that require a copy. So this graph shows the breakdown of our operating fund revenue. Um, you'll see that we are heavily locally funded with over 92% of our money coming from property taxes and other local sources. The flip side to that is on the expenditure side. We are a heavy salary and benefits organization, just like most school districts. So we're up at about 79, pushing 80% of our resources spent on salaries and benefits, which is our people. So that brings me to operating fund summary in our, in our tentative budget. So the tentative budget has 70.58 million in revenue, 69.39 in expenditures, provides a surplus of about 1.2. The other uses represents transfers between funds. In this case, it's transfers out of the O&amp;M fund to debt ser- debt service and to our capital projects fund. Both of those two funds are non-operating funds, so that's about 3.9 million in tentative budget. And then the fund balance would be 29.3 or 42.31% of expenditures at the end of 2023. So in the capital projects, what's comprised in that projects, um, at least as I drafted the tentative budget and not knowing where we would ultimately settle, I wanted to put something in there. So for summer of '22, we have the last parts of paying for the Mackenzie, Ramona, and Harper projects that will hit the fiscal year '23 budget. Then for the summer of '23, at least in this tentative version, I have, um, the tentative budget includes three projects, as I mentioned. Quantity and composition will be dependent. So as we move ahead, now that we have some direction from the board on the design level, that really encapsulates most of the costs that might hit in '23. And so I will budget for that, for that plan in the final budget as we head, look ahead towards August. So the total budget for capital projects, at least in the tentative versions, 10.7 million. Debt service and transfers, um, so the debt service fund has a budget of about 2.5 million. And included in that is repaying our 2020, uh, limited tax bonds, and then we have some debt certificates, which we pay from the operating funds, which is about a million dollars a year. Transfers between funds, um, the, the annual transfer to O&amp;M to debt service is about 995,000. Then we've got it slated for about 2.9 million from O&amp;M capital projects. There is a possibility that we may need to transfer money from Ed to O&amp;M. We will see what the, what the final budget shows us. One other thing I wanted to point out before we take any questions is, when we get to the next item on the agenda, we have the annual resolutions. One of those is allowing us to loan money. Historically, we passed a resolution to allow, we had fund to loan money, the O&amp;M. As a matter of procedure, the O&amp;M fund is the fund that transfers money to fund those capital projects. That's just required by the school, by the, um, ISB's accounting procedures. So as we think ahead to what the delays might. So as we think ahead to what the delays might look like because of the property tax issue at Cook County, I will be reviewing over the summer whether there needs to be any other inter-fund loans between funds. Does the working cash, which has, I think, somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars sitting in it, does that fund need to loan some money to others? So we'll look at those combinations, and there are certain funds that can loan money and some that can't to each other. I'll take a look at that and bring that back in August. And then the other thing I just wanted to put on people's radar, I haven't put anything in tentative budget just yet, but is tax anticipation warrants or TAWs. So this is the most likely form of short-term borrowing that the district would use if, if those property taxes in the fall really do get delayed into the winter. As I had mentioned last month, I'll review like, at what point over the summer I'll start to look at, at what point are we going to run out of money if they just keep delaying? It gets to be December or January or February or, you know. And so we'll, we'll have that, we'll have that date known when we need to trigger some borrowing. And with TAWs, the way it works is you're really, your borrowing is really just guaranteed by the future receipt of taxes. In this case, it'd be property taxes. The length of borrowing that I've seen in my career could be a few days, could be up to a few months, depending upon the situation you're in. And what I'm thinking is, I'll look at it, we'll come back with some amounts that we might think. And then as we get into like August and September, we'll have some discussions about how do we want to go about it? Obviously, this is something that I think would need board's approval to allow us to do that. And we can kind of finalize those details as we get into the fall and kind of prepare for that worst-case scenario that Cook County keeps voting to us. But other than that, like the, the general composition of the tentative budget, fairly similar to what we saw last month. And as I said, we'll go in and detail out any changes from that first look that we did in May to the final version in August, and we can share all that at the August committee meeting. One last slide, and this is our, our slide that we like to look at. Revenues versus expenditures in the operating funds. And as you can see, the revenues exceed expenditures in operating funds. This current, current year that we're about to finish, and then also in the tentative budget. So with that, take any questions?
Thanks, Cory. Thanks especially about, thanks especially for thinking about the cash flow issue. So the anticipated political issues between the order review and the assessor, that's my understanding. Does anybody have questions for Cory on the budget?
Go ahead, Frank. The real simple ones. The slides that you just showed here, they're not in the paper package here. Are those, are those in Word docs or?
I can share those.
Yeah, that'd be helpful because the information is presented in a nice place, but it'd be nice to be able to go back to that. It's a small one, and I'm sure you're handling it, but I know a lot of our reserves are in CDs. So are there any issues with like getting the money out of the CDs with, you know, early pullout whatever penalties? I assume you're, you're managing.
No, 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 there wouldn't be any, any issues. Like if, if we really, so one of the things that, I think the first time that I heard about this potential delay was November or December, and right when I first heard it, obviously it's when you're in the business official role, that's kind of shocking news. I mean, especially for a district like us where a huge percentage of our budget comes from that source. So one of the first things I did was, was talk with our representative PMA that does a lot of the searching and finding of our CD investments and said like, look, we're, we're going to have to keep anything from now on, it's got to mature between like now and Halloween of 23, or sorry, 20, of 22, knowing that like we could go a few months past or a few months of delay in receiving those taxes. But more than a few months, we really started to need to think about it. So since we found out we've been, any new investments that we've made, we've structured to make sure that they matured by then, so we didn't have to break any CDs. Because we can still, because if you break a CD, then you're basically forfeiting whatever you would have earned on there. But the flip side to that is, so we're maybe foregoing a little bit of extra interest earnings, but we're preserving that liquidity and we're earning a little bit of interest on those balances in our money market accounts or liquid or max account. So that was one step.
I assumed you were, but I just, because the other option would be, I mean, you did early analysis and prevention. The other would be if it comes down to breaking the CDs or prowling a little bit more short-term working cash. We need to discuss that, but it sounds like you've handled that, so that's, that's fine. And one other minor detail, if, if we do go forward with the, the full loan and the lots, build lots of things next summer, not this summer, next summer.
Yeah, summer of 23.
There'll probably be a lot of pre-ordered equipment. Does that, would that then fall into this budget?
So you know, what's interesting is for as many years as I've been involved in in like, you know, the business side of, you know, ultimately ending with like paying for projects. You know, everybody places their orders right after like they give board approval of projects. And in, prior to COVID, I'm sure equipment was coming in, but I never remember making payments to contractors for equipment. We have started to do that this year a little bit. And the email chains are interesting in that the vendors are asking for it. And Nicholas and Associates, who helps monitor it, same thing with the architectural firm, making sure that we have proof that the equipment has been delivered to a third party, it's stored somewhere safe. And it's not just some vendor saying, yeah, I, I got 300,000. So we have some procedures in place, but it has something that I've noticed this year where vendors were starting to ask for a payment a little bit earlier for that. So spinning that forward to next year, to your point, yeah, I think we could see that. So instead of maybe getting that bill like in the middle of the summer for all that equipment, I certainly would expect that if we did say three or four projects, that the, whatever equipment, the chiller or unit vents that are involved in that, we would probably end up paying that upfront. Though on the, just for scope, just to give you a frame of reference, off the top of my head, I think like the cost for the chiller at Mackenzie was, I think like 100,000 or maybe somewhere between 100 and 120,000. And for unit vents, from what we've seen recently, they're about somewhere between, depending on the, the style you get, somewhere between 5,000 and like 7,500 each. So even if you're doing like say 20 classrooms, it's about 100,000. So it's not like when we think about a $3 million project, and but Joe was talking about the stuff that drives the cost. Yeah, the equipment is not free, but it's really the, the kind of the tedious nature and how you're touching so many parts of the that make those projects so expensive.
And that, that, I just wanted an order of magnitude because, you know, if you multiply by four or five projects and like, you know, 400,000 per, that starts, that's a bigger number than we normally would have, but with the numbers you said, that, that doesn't, that doesn't really apply. So thank you for that analysis. That's all I have.
All right, anyone else? Okay, thanks Cory. All right, so one last item, this is, should, should go real quick. So included in the handouts, so I'll try and share my screen real quick. So each year, we have a kind of list of annual renewals and resolutions that the board approves at the June board meeting. So on this document, I've listed out four items. First item is the treasurer's bond renewal. So I hold the role of being the designated District 39 treasurer. One of the items that's required of that is that the district has a treasurer's bond that is approved annual and taken out on, on me. I think the amount of the treasurer's bond is about 16 million in that neighborhood. So that is one thing that we will bring back next Monday. Another one is a resolution for inter-fund transfers from O and M to Capital Projects Fund. As I've noted on this document, construction projects are to be paid out of the Capital Projects Fund per ISB's accounting regulations. And so the way to transfer money is through that operation maintenance fund source. So we have a resolution for that transfer, something that we've done for many years. Another one is a kind of a potential safety net, which I think probably is likely to come into play this year. Hasn't since the first couple of years that I've been here. The inter-fund loan between Ed to O and M, and as I mentioned in the prior agenda item, we'll look at whether we need to incorporate even more loan scenarios between funds as we work our way through the fall without getting that second installment money. This particular structure, in the past, we've always done it as a loan, not to exceed 2.5 million between Ed and O and M. And then the last item on the list is a resolution authorizing the payment of accounts payable invoices during the summer. So we, we do this every summer, and it's pretty universal across school districts where districts will have a board meeting in June. Many districts select not to have a scheduled board meeting in the month of July. And then they come back in August and will have meetings again. And so this resolution would allow us to continue to pay all the normal invoices that we would receive throughout the summer. You know, some are regularly monthly invoices, some could be for, you know, construction, you know. So some of those are monthly, some of those are every few weeks. So that's just a pretty standard operating procedure. So I'm happy to answer any questions related to any of those four items. If not, then we'll have those documents in the board packet for next Monday.
I don't have a question. Does anybody have a question? We've seen this before. All right. Thank you, Cory. I appreciate all that. Before I hand it back to you, should we take a five-minute break?
Do it.
All right.
That sounds great. We'll do a five-minute break and reconvene right around 9:30. Thank you. All right, we'll continue with strategy. Mrs. Schneiderface.
Thank you. We have a very short agenda for strategy, and it's Science Olympiad. Dr. Fleming, am I turning it to you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it, and Katie has done some extensive research. But the board will remember that this item was brought forward. The board was looking for some additional background information and history on the program. Katie Lee was kind enough to put together a pretty thorough report for the board. While this item doesn't directly connect with the strategy, it seemed like the place to, to put it for discussion purposes in light of the board's request. So we've provided a whole lot of information. And Katie, is there any kind of high-level summary you want to make before we move into just open discussion?
Yes. I thought it would be helpful to just summarize at a high level, just very head, the information that's in this chart. So this is the history of how Science Olympiad started with the Ed Foundation taking the lead, forming a science and math committee. And from the results of that in 2012, 2013, there was a soft launch of Science Olympiad courses at High Crest just to gauge community interest and being able to offer some Science Olympiad related courses. And they hired one Science Olympiad coordinator to help with those efforts. And in 2013, 2014 was the first year, and they had advertised the Science Olympiad courses. The competition teams were to begin in 2014, 15 for High Crest and the Woma. It was really the first year where the Ed Foundation recruited the community members and volunteers to run the courses. The courses were aligned with the competition, so it changed every year, or it would change every year, starting this year. And with two Science Olympiad coordinators hired with also two facility coordinators, they won it. And in 2015, 16, what they discovered even in 14, 15 was that they faced challenge hiring facility coordinators. And what that meant was those Science Olympiad courses were held in our school buildings at High Crest and the Junior High, and it was after hours. And so the first year, what they learned really quickly is that they needed a point person within the building that knew the building in order to assist with those logistics. And then they adjusted the course offerings to the interest of students. And it did not necessarily align with the competition topics that were set from Science Olympiad those years. And so this was announced that this would be the last year for the competition teams. And that's when a conversation happened with the current superintendent, asking District 39 to take over the competitive teams. It also happened to be my transition year. So in 2016, we met with the Ed Foundation and we came up with an agreement of sorts just outlining the distinction between the Science Olympiad courses that the Ed Foundation would continue to do as well as what District 39 is agreeing to also do with the competitive teams. And so they, so we took over that year. But then in this current year, the Ed Foundation, as it was shared at a board meeting, announced a discontinuation of the science courses that they changed the name to, the Lab 39. Thought it would be important to note that, you know, we follow as far as the competitive teams, what the Science Olympiad organization's rules are. And so for each of the teams, we can have, you know, as many as we can staff. But as far as the competitive team makeups, it would be at most 15 students. And they would perform at regionals and local competitions, and then hopefully qualify for state. So what the chart describes for you is what we've been able to do. So in 2016, 2017, we did have a varsity and a junior varsity coach, or at least someone willing to do that. Boy, did we learn really quickly that one coach for both of those teams was super challenging. He did a wonderful job, I have to say, and the parents were very appreciative, but it was hard. He had three teams to work with. And then after that, the interest did not remain because it was so challenging as far as the duties. And then 2017, 18, we did, we were able to secure a varsity coach, actually for two years in a row, but no JV coach. And so when we had interest in a coach, we prioritize the competitive team to be staffed there. So again, you'll see the numbers stay pretty consistent with 15, 15 because of the rules. And then 2019, 2020, varsity and a junior varsity was able to be secured. During the pandemic, they did not have Science Olympiad. We had a team, oh no, we did not have a team that's out. And then in 2021, 2022, we currently have a varsity. So really, if you, a lot more details provided to you in the report. So as you read, I think the reoccurring theme in, for both the Ed Foundation and also our district was that staffing was an issue, whether it be coaches, parent volunteers were high initially that first year, and then waned over time. And then also the facility coordinators at each of our schools, the, the interest of staying and being that point person for, you know, for the Science Olympiad coaches. I think the other big shift was that the competitive teams did not benefit from participation in the courses because they weren't aligned with the topics that change every single year for Science Olympiad competition.
And when you say the courses, you're talking about the D 39 Foundation courses?
Correct.
And I think too, just to highlight that, that relationship a little bit further, and I think Katie might have mentioned it. We learned when we were at the Foundation meeting that it used to be a requirement to take those courses in order to be part of the Science Olympiad team. That requirement was taken away at, at some point. And so that also caused the interest in the D 39 Foundation courses, the Lab 39 courses to wane a little bit as well. This year, they found that it just was no longer aligning with their mission as a foundation because so few students were participating in it. And because it was so taxing on their volunteer base, it quite frankly became a kind of pulling of arms, so to speak, of their own board members to either teach the courses or supervise the, the facilities. And it just, it was a lot to serve a very few number of students. And so that, I think. And so that, I think, with a careful, thoughtful review of their, their mission caused them to discontinue the Lab 39. They also, in so doing though, acknowledged that there's so much at the time of that initiation. There, there were not as many offerings for science, for STEM, both in the schools and outside of the schools through the Park District and through other enrichment kinds of opportunities. And I think at least based on the Foundation's discussion and their review of not only our in-school offerings, but out-of-school offerings for enrichment, they found that there is a myriad options available. There are myriad options available for families and students who are interested in, in really digging deeper here. Again, both in school and out of school, our science curriculum has, has really advanced quite significantly. Our elective options and then the programming that's available through outside organizations. Really, families seem to be feeling like there's some other places where they can access that kind of opportunity. So that leads us to the discussion of the board. Separate from Lab 39, which is, you know, that's the Foundation's decision to make. It really comes down to, this is where we're at with Science Olympiad. We have had a varsity team this year. Our plans, short of direction from the board, would be to continue to try to staff that varsity team and to recruit students who might be interested in participating in that team. Hopefully, we'll continue to have interest in both regards. But as Katie pointed out, staffing, parent volunteers and the site coordinator, which is, is kind of more related to Lab 39s than to Science Olympiad in and of itself, have been some of the bigger hurdles for the program or for any kind of concept of program expansion.
Thank you. I know, oh, Amy, go ahead.
Well, so I just wanted to ask, so if this hadn't been brought to you by the board, it sounds like you have a plan to continue on as is. That would be your recommendation?
Right.
I just want to make sure I understand. Yeah, okay.
We would continue.
It doesn't even sound like a recommendation, right? It sounds like, like they were just going to go do that.
As a plan.
Yes.
So one, one of the reasons, first off, thank you, Katie, for the summary. It's very complete and all within my memory. So I was partly on the, I was on the Ed Foundation one early on in this also and obviously during the board time. And, and I think there are the two separate parts, the, and that was broken out a while ago. The, there are so many resources in the community that, that was available, but it's all to teach and the stuff that the Educational Foundation, but it took a lot of energy. And, and I understand why we separated those two. So really, what I wanted to baseline was the, was the competition part, I guess you'd have to call it, not, so not the, the.
Not Lab 39, but.
Right. One of the things that we did in, and I couldn't remember the exact year, but it's somewhere in the timeframe of 15, 16, is that the board did fund a half a person for Science Olympiad. And unfortunately, it was in the, we're going to add three people and we don't, we're going to divide the resources up. But one of the reasons we're adding three people is that half of that, half of a person will be supporting Science Olympiad. So I just wanted to baseline that.
What year was that, Frank?
It would have been around 15. And we, we added, we had to do some stuff with, with environmental and I mean, there were two or three, three or four different categories of things and it ended up being staffing. But especially for some of the, the work, it wasn't the full-time position, it wasn't the teacher. It was a lot of the background things.
Yes, I can, I can address that. So one of the things that started happening is with a curriculum coordinator being the roles and responsibilities of the, one of the curriculum coordinators was to start adding on some of that liaison work of sustainability as well as the office-style work, if you will, to support the competitive teams. So we have currently a coordinator assigned, it's a 5A coordinator, who supports in that. So for example, while the coaches really focus on the students and making sure that the tryouts are being done and the team is formulated and they travel to it. So the logistics, a lot of the logistic, the administrative things of monitoring Science Olympiad, whether they are going to run or not, what the topics are, all of those registering for the regionals. And then under my umbrella is the fun bucket for Science Olympiad. So we manage that in curriculum instruction for this extracurricular activity. And so that was the allocation or the role and responsibility that was added at the same time. And so it, it happens to be the same coordinator under my department.
Was that a half-time position allocated to Science Olympiad?
No.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
No, it was a singular role and responsibility.
Here's another responsibility this person will.
Correct. And of my administrators, because, coordinators, because of the 5A span of responsibility that under that role, and so we've had a coordinator support the administrative, the logistics of that. But it is not half at all by any means.
Right. I, I mean, again, it was, it's hard as, it's always hard because you don't want to have a full-time person that it was, you're three or four things that we needed funding for and about a half a time person with the funding here over the year, maybe it's a little less, but at the time, the money was allocated. So I, I just wanted to baseline that, that this is, this is something that there at least was.
Sounds like there still is.
And still is a funding commitment. It's not a, you know, burden or whatever. So I, I wanted to get that baseline again. The other is that it's, it's, there's a, the constraint is really, there's student interest. The difficulty's been in getting the the facilitator or, I'm not sure what the right word is.
Coach.
Coach, there we go. And, and that didn't go year to year. The, the student interest is, you know, when you look at the years, when there's the two coaches, it's 20, 25 to 30 kids. When there's one coach, it's 15, because that's all that's support. So there is, there is an interest in this. And it's always been a problem that the stipend is not a big enough incentive for the amount of work involved with this, so it makes it difficult to keep that going. And that's one of the things I wanted to bring to the board, that we have this program, we have some funding associated. It serves student interest. There's been some coach support, but, you know, it's sporadic. And it's hard to have a program that's successful with one year, yes, another year, no. This year, I think we, early on, Educational Foundation thought that there wasn't going to be a coach, but it sounds like we got one.
Again, there's two different things. One is the coach for the Science Olympiad team. That is our responsibility. The other is the D 39 labs, which is just the after-school enrichment, sign up for a class, kind of separate from Science Olympiad, although initially conceived to support one another. They really, there, there's really a very clear difference between those two.
And I, I didn't mean to, but, but even without that, I mean, the coach has been, I, I know it's, it's taken effort to, to make sure that there was a coach and, and from a student interest standpoint, if there's two coaches, one that would share the responsibility, but there is some student interest there. So I wanted to just kind of, this hasn't been brought up, I mean, there's a long history of this, but it hasn't been brought up at a board meeting. There's a lot of new board members, administrators, et cetera. So I wanted to baseline that. I also wanted to just kind of baseline why I think this is important.
Why Science Olympiad specifically is important.
The, the competition part. Try not to confuse it with the other part.
Wait, can I just clarify for purpose of the conversation? Are you, what is it you're hoping to achieve?
Well, one, I want to make sure that it remains a commitment. And, and two.
Sounds like it is continuing.
Well, it.
I, I would just want to make sure I'm not, it wasn't proposed to go away.
No, yeah, we, we intend to continue Science Olympiad as it has been functioning thus far and continue to staff it accordingly too.
Well, and then the, the second part is I wanted to make sure that it was at least brought up how important this is and if there was a way to, to encourage there being two coaches so it could be quote unquote, fully staffed, that, that's something that, that we should think about. So just a couple of, of little factoids to add on to the, a lot of detail that, that Katie was able to put together. Historically, this has been one of the, the, historically, a significant number of people on the team have been, have been women. So when we've looked at women in STEM, et cetera, et cetera, this addresses that. It's often been over half. Historically, many of the people involved with this have been from our minority community, which we, we enjoy having, but we often don't talk about how we're doing anything specific. And historically, half to slightly more than half that come from our minority community. So it hits two topics there that I think are important from a school standpoint. I think when we, we look at why this is important just in general for the 15 or probably hopefully in the future 30 that, you know, off and on, kids of varsity and the JV team where they can move up. EvoCA allocates a lot of money toward this and they spend money on lots of things. That, that's fine. But to put in perspective, they've, they've been, they've gone to state like every year for at least the last decade. They've come in first or second almost every year for the last decade. In the last decade, twice they came in second in country.
Frank?
Yeah.
You might interrupt.
Sure.
I think it's, this is important. You're making the case it's important. I, I mean, I think it's important. I assume we all think it's important. I mean, is there, is there something we could do to get more funding or would more funding help? You know, this, I think that's, is that where you're going with this?
We have both, we have both coaching positions funded. We just haven't been able to staff them. So if it's the board's direction to increase that stipend, is that, are they dictated by the collective bargaining agreement? So that certainly could be looked at in future negotiations or if that is a critical element, we could sidebar that out. I mean, that's a, it's, the stipend is dictated by the collective bargaining agreement. And we have, and I, again, we have actively encouraged, actively sought coaches for the teams. It, it certainly hasn't been underemphasized by the administrative team. But tho- those are the levers we have to pull. Is, do we want to fill the positions? We certainly do. Do we have the funding set aside to staff those positions at the current level? We do. The stipend is dictated by the collective bargaining agreement. So if we want to look at that, we can either do that as part of collective bargaining down the road. And we all know kind of how that goes back and forth or as some other kind of sidebar discussion if that's the board stretch.
Frank, what is your request here? Like I'm, I'm trying to understand what it is you'd like to happen.
I, I mean, what Carrie was just kind of bringing up, there, the, if there are some creative ways, you know, maybe two coaches for the varsity team so they don't have a bunch of effort. Again, it's hard to find people willing to do this, but some of it is because historically it's been a lot of work. But I mean.
Do we know that or are we?
Well, I know it's been historically hard to find people.
Right. So that just makes me wonder.
If there's a lack of interest, like right on people's.
Yeah, but it's a lack of interest at the school, not the lack of interest at the student level. I just want to keep those two things separate. When we say lack of interest, I mean.
Are we turning children away who wants to be on the team?
When, in the years when there's been both a varsity and the JV, both teams have basically filled up. So when there's only a varsity team, the JV team is smaller. And there's a certain continuity to this. I mean, if one year you have a JV team, the next year you don't, then you have a varsity team. The varsity team isn't staffed.
I want to sort of round out our conversation here because it, it feels like we all value this program tremendously. I, if there's a solution to be had, I, I'm not sure how to facilitate this conversation. It sounds like it's been advertised, it's supported financially, that's continuing to be the plan. I hear you're, it is frustrating when we don't have staff. I'm just not sure. It sounds like our hands are a little bit tied in terms of what can be done. If you have a recommendation, that's something we can consider.
I, I'll, I'll throw one out and I understand, partly it's because I'm in my last year here. So I want, and there's a number of people that haven't talked about Science Olympiad, so I wanted to bring it up. I know the parents, a lot of the parents that have been involved with it really thought it was important. One last data point, the new cheer team has come in the top 10 in the country, like 10 out of the last 20 years. And more than half of the people on the new cheer team come from EvoCA.
Do you have a recommendation for us?
It, I don't know where it falls in, so recommendation, a suggestion maybe is a better word because recommendation implies different things. One of the ways that EvoCA with a school one quarter the size has been successful even at the national level and send a team there every year, has been that they've hit, they've staffed, overstaffed, I think. With, with permanent people, not just coaches, you know, with, on a stipend. They've spent more money in terms of having a, you know, a part-time or more science teacher that could support the team. So if stipend isn't a way of getting people excited and again, this is a, not a recommendation, but a, a thought, the way they do it is by funding it as a part-time teacher. That's a bigger commitment and again, but I, but the, but the point is, there is an interest in students, there's a value. I mean, if you're on a new cheer team that goes to state and then goes to the country almost every year and does well, that is a really important indicator of what your interest is, but also what kind of school. So value, interest, we haven't figured out how to fund it. You know, keeping in mind other ways of funding, I think would be.
I guess my concern would be, so I don't disagree about the importance. I don't think any of us do, but we've sort of, we've gone through a whole strategic plan, come out with our priorities. I, I just don't know how we just come forth with our own ideas of where we think staffing needs to be at. To me, it feels like it's just not really our.
Yeah, and, and again.
Place to recommend additional staff.
I didn't say recommend.
I know.
Partly it's, I get a tiny soapbox here. The next strategic plan, I know it sounds like we just did it.
That's my concern is us.
I, I just want to make sure that, that it's understood that this is important. The next time we do a strategic plan, that this is something that should be at least brought up.
So, so I think that we can say that.
If, if the community calls for this to be a priority, by this, I'm saying Science Olympiad to be a priority in the strategic plan, then that certainly would be the priority that would be, that would have been brought forward. I don't think our community devalues it, but I don't think it elevated to the level of the most important thing or one of the five most important goals for us to tackle.
And also when it's, I'm sorry. I also want to say, Frank, that just because EvoCA does better in, in this area than us, doesn't mean our program's not successful or valued. It's, it's not a competition amongst new cheer feeder.
I, I understand that. I also understand that when you have a strategic plan and you have hundreds, certainly 50 people involved, this is a. people involved, this is a relatively small subset. And historically, a lot of the people involved with this have not been as vocal of bringing this up, other than every time I talk to anybody, they bring it up to me. So I'm.
I just think as a, as a board process, it's, I'm not sure it's our, I'm not sure it's our role to come forward with our own idea, not, not that it's not valuable. I do think it's incredibly valuable, but if we're talking about adding positions.
And I didn't, that's why, I'll, I just wanted people, we haven't talked about this in a long time at the board. I wanted to bring it up because there's a lot of people that haven't been aware of its history and I thank Katie for putting together a very detailed plan. I had a chance that I've been involved with it at various levels for 10 years. I wanted to bring up how important I think it is and, you know, the board can keep that in mind for the future, but I wasn't recommending or something specific.
Does anybody else have anything to say before we close out the Strategic Planning Committee?
I'll just say thank you as well. I found it to be very informative and I was not as familiar with Science Olympiad and the difference with class 39, so it was quite helpful and I learned and glad to hear it's a priority. So thank you for putting it together.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Important.
Okay, I'm turning it back over to President Palin.
Thank you. So this is our opportunity for public, the public to address the board. We don't see anybody here, any community members present, so I will move to old business and I will turn it to Dr. Kremiscoli for policy review.
Thank you. The board has had some discussion regarding its policy review process. Historically, the board has taken the board policy book section by section and reviewed those policies accordingly. And so there's been kind of a cycle of review happening in that regard. What we have found more recently, especially as we've attempted to align with press, is that press's cycle of review happens a little bit differently. And so as we were recently reviewing some of the required updates for policy related to curriculum, I think the question came up, how could we do this more efficiently? Are we, as a board, approaching policy review in the best way possible? We had some discussion around what services press offers and so we did some research there, while at the same time looked at where our policies really need updating. And so the board has been provided with some background information regarding press policy services through the Illinois Association of School Boards and what that process would look like if the board wanted to do a full and complete policy review and update. What we found also though is as we looked through our policies and our alignment with press most recently, there's about 80 that need to be updated at this point. That sounds like a large number and yet, in comparison to the totality of it, it's actually a manageable number. And so having weighed the options, we believe it is in, it's probably the most efficient and useful approach at this time for us to focus on those 80 policies to align with press over the summer and first quarter of next year. That will then give us by winter time, full, full review of press, of our policies in alignment with press. And then from that point forward, rather than taking board policies section by section, we would then take them quarterly based on the press policy updates that come out quarterly. So there's really two approaches, three. Let me restate that, there's really three approaches the board could take to policy review. One would be continuing with its current practice, which would be section by section and just updating as they come out. The second would be doing a whole board policy audit and review as the board heard that would take at least three to four meetings and some pretty substantial investment. We don't believe that to be necessary at this point. And the third would be, let's focus on those that we haven't reviewed and updated in alignment with press and then from there move forward with the quarterly updates as recommended by press. So of those three options, we would love feedback from the board and a direction on next steps.
I like three. Sounds great. I agree. That was so helpful. I'm so grateful that you looked into it. I think, you know, this is some of the most important work we do and so I feel like that's a really thoughtful way to go.
I agree and I think there's, there's still, there's an advantage to doing executives like that. So one of the advantages, again, as a board, we decided, I'll be two years ago now, it seems like last year, that the way we would address general neutral wording was by going to specific words. You know, if we just say, we'll take crust, then that, those type of decisions, not saying that one specifically, become harder. So the concept of doing it this way where we base it on crust, but we tweak it if it's appropriate for our community.
Yeah, I agree.
Lisa? Okay.
Thumbs up.
Okay. So then we will, with Heather's leadership and guidance in particular, we'll take some time this summer and over first quarter and really focus in on those 80 that haven't yet been updated in alignment with press. And we'll bring those forward still in manageable batches, so to speak, for first reading and then second reading, because we do think, and I think it's been the board's commitment, to make a thoughtful review of each policy as it's being reviewed and updated. But we'll take that approach in trying to align with press, pointing out where maybe the board has been a little bit different in the past, getting those updated. And then again, by winter, we should be fully updated, so to speak, and then we'll just take that quarterly approach from there. Okay, thanks. Great.
Very exciting. Thank you. Any other old business? We'll move to new business. I know we have, oh.
Did you do public comments?
I did.
Okay.
There's new, new business. I know we have one topic. We can start with homework guidelines. Dr. Kremiscoli?
Yes, thank you. Again, Katie Lee was tasked with doing some research for us and bringing forward to the board for your consideration, the homework guidelines of District 39. As we look at these and as you'll see too, there's some general guidelines, but we know that there is not blanket consistency and it would be certainly very difficult to have consistency across content area, grade level and in students, quite frankly. We know that we give our teachers some authority to make decisions about what makes sense to be completed as homework and what makes sense to be completed as schoolwork. And so there's some general guidelines and we present and share these with you today for your discussion based on your request. Katie, do you want to give a high-level update or summary here?
Sure. I just thought it would be helpful to have all the information in one place. And so this is the direct wording of the board policy, six colon, two nine zero of homework. The intent of the work that happened many years ago and that continues to be updated with as far as the practical implication or application would be to align with this philosophy that the board has approved as part of our board policy. So in the parent handbook, there are guidelines that are communicated to our families and that staff follow and apply and that those two, and I'll lay that up to your interpretation of whether they align with the policy or not, but we feel that the administration has created practices and guidelines for our teachers to align with what we feel is the philosophy and the goals of the board. The other part that we've added is tried to look up something where we've gathered some perceptions on homework and the one that we pointed out was the eighth grade student survey. And we had two years of results that somewhat pitted with other topics embedded. But when students were given approximately 11 options, students were asked, what aspect of middle school life do you find challenging? And these were the results. So one year, 57.46 put balancing schoolwork and social life as the top, as the top answer. And then in 2018, 2019, 61% said the same thing. Actually, it was, the lack of sleep was the top answer, but embedded in that was managing homework load and balancing schoolwork and social life as well. And from 2019 to present, the survey was not administered. So this is the data that we can share with you and really for you to use as a springboard of the discussion.
And I'll just acknowledge, we are administering the survey again this year. So we'll have updated information as soon as that becomes available to us.
I have a question. So is, are the survey results challenging? I mean, like, I mean, are you alarmed by the response, which is that more than 50% of the students have a difficult time balancing their, you know, at home time?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, that was, that was challenging. It was consistent across the township. It wasn't just District 39 that would say that. What's, what's difficult for me to tease out is which, for the purpose of this conversation and this topic, what is truly homework management or just being a teenager or a pre-teen with social life and home life and activities outside and all those extracurriculars like Science Olympiad as well? And I think that there's so much happening. How we can tease out whether it's homework or not in isolation would just be a question of mine.
So will the survey this year be different?
I don't know.
The survey is actually a township-wide survey. So if there's something specific we wanted to ask our students, we may need to do that separately. And I think, again, we need to keep in mind that the way, the way the question is asked, it says, what aspect of middle school life do you find challenging? And so these are the items, they can click as many as they, they want and certainly managing some of that are things that our students continue to identify as a challenge. I'll share, and I don't know if I saw this on the report, but the other options for students to select, there is an option that says managing homework, receiving grades is another option, managing long-term projects is another option, making new friends, peer pressure to use e-cigarettes and/or vape, peer pressure to use drugs and/or alcohol. We talked about lack of sleep. Another option would be depression. Another option would be anxiety. We did add the option of remote learning. We added the option of COVID-related changes to my school experience for this year as well to try and capture what impact that was having there too. So, and then there's an open-ended, anything else you might want to add, which sometimes gives us something more to learn about. So again, just another kind of data point of some of the options that students might select.
I just want to jump in here for a second and say, like homework, this has been a discussion across the ages, right? Our homework policy. And there is something about self-advocacy as well, right? Where students are always encouraged, if this becomes a problem, to kind of work this through with teachers and parents. Like life balance is a skill and it doesn't mean that our homework policy is good or bad. It just means that this is a challenge. So I just want to say, like, it comes up all the time. I can't remember why this is coming up again, but it does.
Well, that leads me to my question, which was, I think this came to us because of a board question. Is there a concern internally or anything you all need guidance from us about?
Only if the board wishes to change what is our current practice. We would appreciate that feedback if there's something that needs to be attended to.
Right. But not because you're seeing a problem. Yeah.
That is correct.
Just, yeah. This is her.
So I think, well, I look for, I'm glad we're doing the survey again and that'll be excellent. I appreciate the additional information that you provided there in terms of how the students can respond. I will say that this does come up on a regular basis from constituents, community members. I appreciate what Lisa had to say, that it's always, you know, it's an ongoing topic. And I think the survey will be interesting because there is some perception, based on what I'm hearing, that the homework application or in practice has changed since COVID. That there used to be more homework, then with COVID, there was no reason for homework. You're doing your work at home all of the time. And now, parents are not seeing as much of that need for students to carve out a dedicated period of time to do the homework or maybe it's inconsistent. But there is some perception that that was a COVID thing that it changed with COVID. Maybe not. I will say, when I read the policy, I think it's excellent. I think it's spot-on exactly, you know, what we are looking for in terms of giving students a chance to develop those executive functions in school. How do I take, you know, what I learned in the classroom, what my teacher is looking for and apply it and find time at home to practice and reinforce that? How, homework also provides that great home connection, which I read in the philosophy as well. It gives parents a chance to see what my children are doing in the classroom, how they're doing if they're challenged, which is, which is nice. With everything online now, it's just a nice chance to, you know, get a look into the classroom. And then the other piece is preparing for what's ahead. So making sure that, you know, these kids are on track eventually for what they are going to need to be responsible for and comfortable with in the career. Those are the considerations that I continue to hear and I think that it's all reflected in the policy and the philosophy and, you know, just making sure that that is actually what is, you know, being practiced.
So it sounds like, Anne, thank you. If I can summarize that for our team then, what you're suggesting is, what's written here, the policy and the handbook guidelines make sense. You support that, but we'll want to just make sure that we continue to review that with our teachers, maybe at a, at a school-based level so that teachers are collectively just reminded of, this is, this is our approach to homework, this is what we're aiming for with homework. And let's make sure we kind of self-check occasionally and make sure that we're aiming in this direction because you're right, it will forever be a bit of a debate, but knowing that there's some consideration of a COVID impact here, that's something for us to pay attention to as well.
No, that's exactly right. You just said it much better. Thanks. Any other thoughts? Yes?
I think mostly, I mean, there's, one, there's lots of parents. This is always the thing. It's like, and I have two kids and one of them has no homework and the other one does. You know, my kid last year had homework this, where he doesn't. I mean, it's very easy for a parent to see fairly large shifts. So monitoring and understanding is very visible to, from a parent's standpoint. Putting that aside, this directly goes to executive function. And I know self-advocacy is very important, but part of grade school kids is to teach them those skills. And back when there actually were surveys at the tier level, there used, one of my favorite, which they dropped unfortunately, was at the end of freshman year, they would ask, how well were you prepared for this year?
That's what became the eighth grade survey, actually. So now they do it in eighth grade and then sophomore year.
Right. But they're, they're anticipating how well they're prepared for high school. The other one, other survey was able to say, now that you've had a year of high school, how well did you feel you were prepared? You know, that survey doesn't exist anymore, but the value of that one was, I think it was number one, but if not, it was a close number two, was they weren't prepared for them on homework. And part of this policy, when it was introduced, was to walk the balance line of nutrients assumption, not everybody does it obviously, but was three hours of homework a night. And nobody expected the eighth graders to be at like two hours a night so that to go enough to three would be, you know, a simple step. But there was, there was a, we want to be, have our kids be on the path toward that so that it's not zero to three or two or whatever the number is. But, so this was kind of a build up those muscles and then yes, it'll be a big step when you go to high school, it'll be a big step when they go from high school to college, but at least you're moving in the right direction. And from the executive skill standpoint, you know, there are, you do need to have how to balance that. If you ask a kid, you know, am I doing too much homework? There's only one answer to that question. Yes, for most kids. So the skill that said, you know. So the skill that said, you know, if you're feeling like you're having too much homework, let's work on the executive skill. Is it that you're not balancing your time? Is it that, you know, we're giving you too much work and that, that the teachers do work with? But there's some real advantages to this that goes beyond just learning more and at home.
Frank, are you recommending a change to the policy?
No, but it, it goes, it goes to what, what Carrie pointed out. You know, monitoring and reviewing and making sure we're consistently striving for this goal. I think, I think maybe over the last, not just COVID, but it's, there's been a little drift. And I, I think it's important that we try to, to strive to meet this, this policy. And if part of that is reviewing, part of it's, you know, helping teachers understand, partly helping parents understand. But that this is an important policy and that it does take some work to maintain this policy.
Yes, I just, I, I, I don't, maybe I already made my point, but I just wanted to say that in terms of the perception data, like if there's no value in the numbers in terms of like, because we don't really know what it means, like, or, you know, it could be like because they're teenagers that they think that, you know, their homework or, or however, whatever factors went into that, you know, those, those numbers, that fifty seven percent to sixty one percent is, you know, like I understand that, or maybe the survey wasn't directed towards that. But maybe then that the data isn't relevant for, you know, a homework policy. Right? I mean, yeah, because like, when I looked at those numbers initially, I was like, oh, that's, is that disturbing? And then my understanding is probably not, right?
I guess I'm just wondering if we should close this out. Like, it feels like there's a recognition that the policy's important, that the policy doesn't need to be changed. That
That's right.
I don't know.
And just internal conversations as structured at school, the school level, what degree necessary. I think that sounds great.
I did have one, real quick one to follow up on what Bonnie just brought up. Asking kids this question is difficult. Would it make sense to have a survey of parents? Do they feel that their kids are getting too much or too little homework and get a feel for the community knowledge? Because it is, as, as Anne pointed out, is one of the things, it does have a, it's a point for parents to interact with for kids. And at least philosophically, it's a, it's a point that parents bring up a lot in discussions. You know, oh, my kid's got too much homework. Oh, my kid has no homework. You know, so would it be useful to get a feel for what the community or the parents, what the parents believe? And I don't know if that changes anything, but that might give a data point that says, whatever we're doing isn't acknowledged as much by parents if that came out that way, or, or they feel. So anyway, I just, there might be some value in that type of survey.
Not sure that came up in our strategic plan. I guess I just am wary of throwing out a question sort of out of context to parents. If it was embedded in another process or came out of a need that you all are seeing.
For me, I guess I would, I would say it would be interesting feedback, but I'm not sure how I act on that, right? So like if I surveyed all of our parents and let's say thirty percent say my kid has too much homework, thirty percent say, say my kiddo has not enough homework and the others fall somewhere in between, I'm not sure how to act on that. Let's say seventy percent of the parents say my kids don't have enough homework. Would I then go to the teachers and say, you just need to assign homework because parents want more homework for their kids? I, I'm not sure that that, I just, as, as an educational leader, I don't know how, how I would act on that data once I receive it without more clear direction from the board about this is how we want to shift. Are we shifting to consistency? Are we shifting to making sure that we're hitting that ten minutes per grade level per night, regardless of how valuable the work is? Like, that's kind of where I would sit. I, I think it is valuable to review the policy because I think, again, we need to continue to make sure that all teachers and our principals understand kind of what that direction is. That's really valuable. But beyond that, unless we're going to have a data point and a goal, I'm not sure with that feedback, what I would, what I would be able to do with that, that would be meaningful.
That's fair. I mean, I think what you said, just good to remind ourselves of any things. It's good to do some reminding with teachers and, you know, do they have any concerns with it? You know, or how is it working out for them and stuff like that.
And I know Nutrure has done some of that recently too. Part of their block schedule approach and their kind of ongoing work with students has been about balancing that, that school-home-life balance and, and wanting to make sure that kids aren't experiencing that high level of stress that maybe at one point that they were experienced to a greater extent. So I know that they've done some work there too. And again, we continue to collaborate with them. Sorry to.
No, no, Ms. Stone.
I agree with the pol- I agree with the policy. At the risk of sounding contrarian, and I don't disagree with what's been said, I would hate our teachers to get the impression from our discussion that we are questioning their practice because I am not. And I think they're, not all homework is created equal. And you talked about things being meaningful and having a kid read for thirty minutes a night is a lot different than having a kid do thirty minutes of busy work to meet some sort of threshold. And I think the policy gets that, so I have no qual- quarrel with that. But, and I guess I don't have a problem with internal conversations, but I don't want this conversation to be construed by the teachers as a criticism of their practice because that's not what I think we're saying, or at least that's not what I'm saying. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the conversation and for putting this together. Any other new business? Okay, I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Can I join the phone, by the way? Just a quick point of order. Is there a way for me to join or no?
To join for executive session? Yes, we'll make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss the placement of individual students in special education programs, collective negotiating matters, and specific employees.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, would the clerk please call the roll? John Cesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart? Connie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Pansico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Pan?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session and the time is ten twenty-nine AM.